Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the emergency committee of a whole meeting. I'm Gary Grackus, I'll be conducting the meeting tonight. We will begin with approval of the minutes for the meeting. For November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. I did see that there was an updated one sent out, so other than that, is there any other changes?
Okay.
All right. Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Okay.
Wonderful. And I just need to note as well that Rosalind, I mean, that's an excuse for the meeting. Okay, we will move forward with a discussion on an updated multi-jurisdictional automatic bid mutual aid fire training, emergency medical and other services agreement, and we have Chief Mittelman present.
Sorry, that's mouthful.
No worries, thanks.
Our attorney's defense, he did attempt to shorten that title, but.
Overall, we did decide to just leave it as is.
He tried to shorten it.
True.
Yeah, that's it. So, well, thanks for the opportunity to see if we can update our auto aid agreement. To give you a little background on the auto aid agreements that is in the packet. This has been part of the auto aid agreement since two thousand and eight. We updated it roughly five years ago in twenty eighteen. And some of the things that needed to be updated in the auto aid agreement is we've added a few outliers of it. And so that assisted, as well as our dispatch has changes to it and our IMT, which is the incident management. So I created a quick PowerPoint to go over it. There's seventeen cities in total that are in this auto aid agreement. Somehow they roped me into being the chair of our Salt Lake Valley Chiefs Alliance. And so I have the fine opportunity to collect signatures for this. And so this being our city is one. The nice part about that is within that, that allowed me to involve our attorney's office in the restructuring of the agreement and then a couple of corrections within it. I will say we didn't get everything because we didn't want to stir it up too much. But we did get a few changes that were positive within how we feel it should be legally written for the auto aid agreement. Would that be fair?
It is.
Okay. So there's three main terms in your auto aid agreement that are out there. There's automatic aid, mutual aid, and then the IMT. And the IMT is the incident management team. The automatic aid is what you guys see on a daily basis. And that would be, you know, unified coming in, actually, just barely, an hour ago. We had an auto accident out on I two fifteen, and it came in at two hundred west. And it was actually at two hundred east. And so we had one twenty-six, which is in midvale, the unified. And then we had eighty-two responding out on it. And then battalion eighty-one went there. And then they pulled one seventeen going in one direction. And then all of us just get together and it was a seven-car pileup. They transported three patients, is what I heard there out of there. Everybody, that I heard, I didn't hear any bad, bad thing.
This is the one with the.
Yeah, just.
It barely, yeah, the helicopter was over about.
Yeah. And, well, I apologize for not silent. Go ahead in the meeting. Please, everybody, silence their phone. I'm hearing the presenter.
We're.
On my radio, too. And so that would be the example of automatic aid. I know you guys, I probably shouldn't start by the call. We were just on.
That's a great example. No.
And so that's how we utilize the automatic aid. It also, what we're on right now is ABL, and that stands for Automatic Vehicle Locator System. And so you get, part of the agreement goes over how we're dispatched and so forth. And I have some stats because I'm sure you guys have a few questions about that. And I'll get to that in just a minute.
I have a question about the accident.
Yeah, go for it.
Okay, so it was on I fifteen?
Yes, correct.
So then.
Oh, I two fifteen. Going to I fifteen is how it came across, but it officially was all on I.
So highway patrol was part of that as well?
Yes, correct.
And are they in the?
They're in our, they're not in our automatic aid agreement for fire because this is just for the fire EMS response.
They don't have EMS?
No, not highway patrol. They do have their patrol officers. Some of them are EMTs, but they're not required to be EMTs. But they're actually covered underneath our state agreement that's actually state legislation. And so we just have a blending working relationship underneath the legislature. So let's say, for example, we go out to Twilla, well, North Willows on this agreement, but regular Twilla is not. And so we can go out there and help them on the state agreement. The difference is, is how you actually accept the resources to go across. Yeah, and we do make some small, you know, rules that goes through, whether it be the mayor's office or myself, if somebody was in an extenuating circumstance, such as, let's say, there was a large hazmat issue going down in Provo. Provo's not on this agreement, but oftentimes it's a state resource, we can be called up on that. Some of those, the difference on if you're not on this list is you could, in theory, bill for some of those services when you call them up. In the history of the city, we have not ever billed for anything we've sent out. We've never sent anything for extenuating circumstances to that city. We have billed for like our wildland system. That is something that we, oftentimes, we sent an ambulance down to the Spanish Fork Fire like four, five years ago, maybe somewhere around there. My memory is not great with connecting how many years ago it was. But then obviously, we did the Idaho Fire this year, as well as the California Fire. We bill out for those as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. The other one is mutual aid. Mutual aid would be that resource that I said are a little bit different of a situation. So we can call out for a mutual aid, such as like Murray is part of a hazmat team that could respond out on a little bit more in-depth, it's not emergent, but maybe they need booms for their river that goes through or out in daybreak. They need a set of three hundred feet of booms, and we carry those booms which catch the oil collection because since we have a major thoroughfare of the rivers going through our city, that's important to us. And so we could deploy our equipment out there, and that would be an example of mutual aid. But they call for us specifically, they say, we would like Murray to come out. That would be for the initial twelve hours of their situation. We have helped out longer than that, but it's same thing, they've helped us longer than that on certain situations. If you remember the fire that was up just as two fifteen bends around that fire for unified, it was this huge house, like fifteen thousand square feet.
Yep.
That would have been into a mutual aid. And they were on it for like two weeks because the house was so segregated, there was fire, and they were pulling bulldozers in and to pull it out, put out the fire, pull it out. Now they've reconstructed it. It was a huge, ginormous house again, so. Yeah.
Good to have insurance.
Yeah, that is. I'm sure they were very grateful, even though if you have that house, I'm sure you have plenty of money. I'm sure you always appreciate having a house still, so. Incident management team, this is the new area. This is exciting for me to have any agreement. What we've done as fire chiefs is we've gotten together and in emergency management overall, there's what they call ESF positions. And those ESF positions are for like housing, planning, logistics, all kinds of, all of the different parts of your EOC, which is your emergency operations center, which ours is down at Station eighty-three. And then we could have a backup here at City Hall as well. This is the secondary emergency operations center. And so we would deploy currently in Murray and every city. We actually have our initial response, which would be the mayor's our chief in command. And then I would be over operations with the police chief, as well as the chief of staff. And then we would make overall decisions. I put my operations chief in charge of fire operations. Kim Sorenson is in charge of housing. Russ Kakala is in charge of like traffic and routing stuff. Kim Bong is our volunteers coordinator, and they each get specialty training in these when we run our drills. What an IMT team does is those vary items, but we go qualify those individuals for these situations. So say we had the unfortunate situation that happened down in Las Vegas with that active shooter, and that just causes mass chaos. You know, there's a lot of folks that were affected by that. It gets pretty in-depth. Oftentimes, city function on those ESF positions with Kim Bong and Kim Sorenson and Russ and everybody else of our department heads, they do just fine in many situations. But in some situations, you may want an actual team that is just dialed in for these situations. And that's what the IMT is. And so we have, like Nick Haskin, our emergency manager, is a logistics specialist. So he's doing actually what Russ, I don't know. Yeah, Russ Kakala is our ESF logistics specialist within Murray City. But what Nick knows is our entire state of logistics. And so if we're going to reach out to state logistics, there's only one emergency going on, we can call on these IMT folks. They come out for the first four days, and then they just get us dialed in. It's free of charge. And the giving part that we have is if they call out, Nick's plan is to then go out and deploy out as the logistics, you know, chief over that area. So knock on wood, we don't plan on using this, but it's always good to have. We have room, just in case. All right. Couple other noteworthy items. We do training monthly. We have it, what it's called is Light Fire Tuesdays. It took me a second. And we send out, we house some of these Light Fire Tuesdays in the springtime. I had sent over to Jennifer the schedule of our training that's here, and that's a valley-wide training. And so this is the agreement that we follow to be able to blend all of us together in our station for liability, insurance, and so forth. So that's really neat. We also have the equipment. In the past, we've borrowed West Valley's fire engine for about four months at a time. When we were struggling, right now, we're doing great on our equipment, you know, as far as we have plenty. But there have been times where we've exchanged equipment. No more than six months can we lend out our equipment to another department. This contract does terminate five years from now, although it does have an auto renewal period. However, even if we didn't want to be, we'd have to have some sort of an agreement by our state licensure if we're wanting to run an EMS and fire service in the city. So, and I already mentioned that the attorneys were, who updated. Here's just some neat information, and you guys may have, I'm your next presenter anyway, so if I go a little bit long, I'm okay.
Yeah. When I just looked at it, I was like, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Don't worry about it.
But I am fun of that. But if you guys have a lot of questions on this part, you guys will have me on January sixteenth. But this is our auto aid agreement, and these are our calls all over. I've done a heat map as well, and I can send Jennifer over these PowerPoints. I just put this together. Yep. And then here's just some interesting numbers. Murray case number, our case number is not the calls that we've actually gone on due to the automatic aid because some other agencies take, but of a case number, they just tally how many calls have happened in Murray. This year, we're at five thousand seven hundred sixty-four. However, we've been on six thousand four hundred thirty-six calls, which is a little bit of a flag for me because I say, ooh, we've been on more calls than what we're actually producing. We're kind of giving a little bit more than we're receiving. We wanted to try and be even. So then I said, you guys are probably going to have some questions over this, and I won't have time in this presentation to answer them. But I can answer them on that July sixth or January sixteenth. It could be July, too. The difference is about six hundred and seventy-two calls more. When I looked at cases, we are missing about five hundred and eighty-two calls that another agency is handling inside of Murray. In UFA, we're handling about one thousand one hundred and five of their cases. In South Salt Lake, we're handling ninety-one of their cases. They're handling about a hundred and ninety-five of our cases. So it's this intermixing mingling of cases. My next thing is, do you guys have any questions? You may have some questions that I can quickly answer here, but I can also, if this interests you, I can spend more time on this on January sixteenth about our department. It's a little bit different than the automatic aid, but this agreement is, this is the background behind what's going on in the agreement. And I think that's important for you guys to understand because it involves the budget and our calls and where fiscal money is going.
Yeah, I have some questions about this, but I'll wait and have them later. I don't have to ask them right now, but it seems kind of obvious why.
Yeah. And feel free to send any of your, I don't know if that's legal, if they can send me questions before. But if you can, feel free to send them, and I'll make sure I include them in the PowerPoint. I'm okay on the fly, but I can draw up all kinds of data from our new program continuum. And I showed the mayor's office that, and I think Doug was like, this is really cool. That was kind of neat to, I've never heard him say that, so I was like. No.
Doesn't sound in style.
He may have said a different word, but I can't repeat it, no. All right, any other questions?
We will revisit that, though, right?
Yes, there is. On the council meeting on January second is the council meeting. You guys are scheduled to approve this auto aid agreement. My recommendation is, I know you guys may not have all of your questions answered before then, the agreement. I was a little bit leery about like, should I just skim a little bit? I'm like, no, they, they need to know. I would strongly suggest we still move forward on signing this agreement because we can adjust.
And have them do what you said. I can put Jennifer on the email and have them ask questions.
And my plan on the council meeting, I wasn't going to go over all of this, but I'm happy to go over all of this on the council meeting, too. It's however is best for you guys and citizens to make sure they know.
Wonderful. All right, moving on to the second item, a discussion on an ordinance emitting sections fifteen dot two four dot zero one zero and fifteen dot two four dot zero two zero of the Murray City Municipal Code relating to the International Fire Code and collected permit fees. Again, Chief Mittelman here.
Hey, thanks for having me back.
Yeah, absolutely.
We've been missing you.
This one is an exciting part for me. If you guys remember when I had the opportunity to be sitting in Fire Marshal Foles's position, I love talking about fire prevention. I love talking about codes and how we can prevent fires. I got a lot of gratification over my career from going into fires and then assisting people. I did decide after we went out to second graders and we started teaching them about fire safety, it's so much cooler to actually prevent some of the stuff that could be prevented out there. So that's where I'll lead into our code adoption and fee schedule. The new code adoption reads is this, the two thousand twenty-one International Fire Code and appendices B, C, and D as pulmated by the International Fire Code Incorporated in pursuant of state law applicable on its entirety in the city. The city also adopts the national standards in pursuant to state law. A couple of things on our passcode that it mentioned in there. Instead of saying the year of the code, it just said the International Fire Code. I really like the year in there, as well as our appendices, because it clearly identifies to our contractors which codes they should be looking at. It was in the past pulmated by the State Fire Board. That was actually never true to my knowledge. And so I pulled that out, I said, that's an error. They're not actually who approves the fire code, the Fire Prevention Board. And so anyhow, we had had that in there, and I'm not for sure how that, it was probably a confusion at some point. But I'm very in-depth of, it's the state legislature that officially approves the two thousand twenty-one code, and it got approved in July, well, back on this last session, but it was officially went into effect July first of two thousand twenty-three. And when I started looking at our code that was set to just roll over, I said, I think it's more important you guys see the code every time the state adopts it. I should be bringing it to you. So here I am now, bringing this code to you and making sure that we're all, this stuff there. If you guys have some questions about the code, feel free to ask. I have about a hundred and eighty slides of all the what did change in it. I was pretty sure you didn't want to see that. So, yeah. Any questions on the code before I go on to the fee structure, even though it's all in one ordinance? Because there's two ordinances that are within this update. All right. The next ordinance involves fire prevention and the fee structure. To give an idea, in fire prevention, we have a fire marshal that's full-time, and that's, you know, Assistant Chief Foles that we have behind me. And then we have a deputy fire marshal, captain, and that is Steve Roberson. And then we have three part-time inspectors that do the majority of the work. That is Scott White. He works about twenty-nine hours a week. We have Mont Cooper, and he does twenty-two hours a week, and then George Saburo that does fifteen hours a week. What do they do? And this is our goal, our task list for them. In plan review, they do about a hundred and sixty life safety sprinkler and fire alarm plan reviews. Jeff does all of those through that. And then annual inspections. Our goal is to hit all four thousand. I won't say we're hitting that. I'll show you a slide in just a minute of what we actually are hitting. And then annual life safety inspections, four fifty, and you guys go through the list. One I want to point out is the construction inspections. Up at Murray Square, we had roughly four hundred and twenty-one units that were built up there, and that's the old Kmart site. Scott or Inspector White was up there, and he was up there roughly about a hundred and eighty times in the last two years, or year, two years, somewhere in there.
Over two years.
It's a lot. He did over fifty inspection hours up there. Some of those are quick visits, others are, you know, an hour and a half visit. Or one time, we had seven of us up there. I went up there, we were doing their final alarm test, and we go through every floor, every apartment. We look to make sure the alarm's going off, to make sure everything's working. You would think the quality of control, you could trust contractors and everything, but unfortunately, we find that all kinds of errors and, and these. And so our goal is to make sure we mitigate those errors before they take occupancy because these are important in commercial and business, or sorry, residential, commercial and residential. They do some other stuff like fire investigation, community risk reductions. But this is where the fee structure lies. In the review of the cost and the recovery within our current fee schedule doesn't even come close to covering the costs. So when you look at about sixty-five thousand dollars part-time is slid towards doing these tasks. And then you have a full-time, you know, fire marshal and a full-time deputy fire marshal. That's a lot of money out there. And so I started wondering, and as well as Fire Marshal Foles started wondering, it's like, what are we compared to other cities? When we opened this can, we started looking, we're like, we know we're never going to recover all of this money that it costs to run these things. How, because part of it's a service as a city we provide. However, are we charging the appropriate fees? And we found, oh, we are well behind our other cities. And Brenda said, hey, you can't think that way. But what you need to think is what is your actual cost for doing the service that we're providing? And so when we looked at plan reviews, we're pretty close on that. That's about a hundred and fifty dollars to review a set of plans. And then we also do a third-party review of these plans out there. And they have to pay extra for a third party. So they go through our fire marshal, Jeff Foles, as well as a third party that is qualified and, you know, certified, just like Fire Marshal Foles is. And they do all the checks on every single little piece on this plans. And a lot of these plans are like three hundred pages for like the Murray Square. And other ones are, you know, two pages because they're just a small tenant improvement, and they have twenty sprinkler heads, so everything in between. With that, our plan review, we felt pretty good to leave at a hundred and fifty dollars. Our construction inspections, we were never charging anything for this. So when Scott went out over the Murray Square, really, when we look at that, how I feel in it, and I want you guys to make sure that you guys are aware, is our wages, you guys just pull off the property taxes and business. But if we would like, we can institute a construction inspection schedule. It's one of the ones on here. And that is fifty dollars, I believe, Foles helping out.
Construction inspection?
Yes, that's it. So fifty dollars per inspection. Just a base, that would cover our part-time wages or our deputy fire marshal wages. When they go out, sometimes that takes thirty minutes, sometimes it takes an hour. So if you look at each time a flow riser, we would charge fifty bucks on the zone above the grid, which is when they take the earthquake bracing. Like this floating ceiling here has sprinklers up above it, and there's little hangers that are in there. And so we check those to make sure in the event of an emergency, you don't just bust and then flood the whole place down and so forth. We make sure like the discussions and the, you know, they have to have the tape off them. It's amazing what they have error-wise in those places. I, I think I see, I'm still on, because I'm a geek, Scott's email, our inspector White. And so I receive when he sends out our corrections on, you know, our forms. And so I get these emails, and he probably sends like three or four errors at least every single day that he's out there. A lot of them are passes, and, you know, hey, we checked, and we passed. But he's finding all of these things. So sometimes we do have to go back. On re-inspections, that's part of this as well, is we would like to say, you know what? When you call us out there, you need to actually have it. We can't continue to come back and give you city money. You know, we don't want to be like the Stripler, like unwelcoming. But what we want to do is encourage them and say, you know what? You can check all this stuff. Here's your list. All you got to do is walk through your own building. We don't.
So do you charge them again another hundred, another fifty dollars?
If we.
Do you go out the second time?
We're not currently, but that's what we would be going to. Currently, we don't charge for any inspection of that.
They do when they have to come and fix my air conditioner or my furnace. They'll recharge me again.
Yeah. I agree. So.
Well, and that might entice them to be a little more responsible.
It does. And that's one of the largest things, I think, that has changed in the last four years because everybody's changed their fee structure is your workers in construction. Trying to put this the best way possible. They've changed a little bit, and their quality of work has maybe what we've seen gone down a little bit. And that causes us as inspectors to be out there a little bit more. We're, I don't like the word babysitting, but unfortunately, we're doing a little bit of babysitting. So to help guide that superintendent on site, this is one of the tools we can utilize to guide them with the right condition.
I wouldn't have any objection in charging them again. I would not. I mean, I'm, we're trying to get my daughter's sprinklers fixed in her condo.
Yeah. So, I'm sure, I don't know what the city has, if, you know, small businesses or somebody that's trying to waive these fees. I'm sure we have a fee waiver or something, but I'm not too worried because these are pretty small numbers overall. They're not thousands of dollars there. So as we cruise through some of these. Do you guys have any questions on the construction inspections? Yeah. Currently, right now, we do a thousand annual business inspections, and we just charge a business license. Now, remember, there's about four thousand businesses in Murray. We would only charge an inspection to those that we actually go out and do the inspection on. So say, for example, you have a home daycare, they're required to get a business license. If we're not actually going out and doing inspection, we're not going to charge them the seventy-five dollars of an annual life safety inspection. So that wouldn't happen. But if by chance you're, say, the sweet, like Garko, let's say you're one of the businesses down in Garko, and we're in there. If we're going to go and inspect, and we have these high-profile, and we want to include that into your business license fee, that we're, you're higher-profile, and we're sending out somebody, but we're giving you a service. Before, we've always provided that service for free. And when we looked around our neighboring cities, we don't feel like we're placing the city in an unfair environment.
So the other cities around us are doing this.
Correct.
Do you have a list of them?
We do.
We could send it to.
Yeah, we can send it. Sorry, we didn't bring it over here. And they're kind of all over the place a little bit. I will give you some good financial advice that I heard from a gal in the back there, Brenda, that we never charge according to other neighboring cities. However, we thought it was a good idea to know what they were charging because we want to be competitive city to drive them in. That's where you guys. And reasonable, yeah. So. Yep. And this one is going before that January second plan as well. So we'll make sure we get that sent over, and if there are more discussion, it can play some. So we'll make sure we get that sent over and if there are more discussion taking place on this, feel free to like let let's talk more and make sure you guys get what you want out of your fee structure that's funding. Cause you know, that's that's what you guys do. There is another one that's kind of a hot topic. I could go through all of these line by line, but I'm trying to hit the highlight ones that I think are like the red flags that if I was you. Another one is a false nuisance alarm. This is pretty wild, but uh do you remember that heat map that I showed you like prior? I didn't throw any heat map because I don't think it's appropriate to name businesses or anything. And that kind of alludes to that. Uh but we have a couple of places that uh we go to to give you an idea on false alarms, about forty times a year. And that's pretty crazy for a false alarm. That takes away the service. So to deter a forty alarm uh place per year that we're going out because they burn toast and they allow toasters in a room or um say, for example, they're not maintaining their system as they should be. So we're constantly going out or uh they have a check valve that needs to be replaced and it'll pass the inspection, but it constantly fails. And so we're getting water bumps in that area because their check valve needs to be replaced. Uh trying to draw out some other ones. They have construction going on in their site and they refuse to put their thing in test mode or cover their systems up and then remove it, you know, at nighttime and so forth and work with them. We get these alarms. So this gives us the ability uh upon the fire marshal going out and using prudence, just like a police officer would. And he sees it fit and he's like, you're not listening, you need to get this repaired. He can issue a let me second, one hundred and twenty-five dollar nuisance alarm on the fourth alarm within sixty days. To give an idea, other cities around us are doing a fourth alarm within twelve months. If your brain's kinda tied in, ours is much more lenient because every sixty days you can reset. So if you're having issues, what I wanted to create was if you're having issues just in a couple of months, we're your friendly neighborhood fire department. We are happy to help you. We are not charging your fees there. So, but if you're going to do this multiple times and never picks it within sixty days, those are the businesses or the locations and the alarm systems that really need to get on it. And sometimes it's not the businesses, it's actually the property management company. And so uh not all the time do they uh live in Murray or around here or the businesses that are dealing with the alarm. So it really gets their attention when you start saying, hey, you're gonna have to, cause it's not the businesses, the property management companies.
So what's concerning about that is while you're over here on the false alarm, there may be, you know, other alarms coming that are really risk, you know.
It is.
When you go to the schools, do you talk about that? About kids pulling the fire alarms? Cause I've been in church, I've been in schools where the kids have pulled the fire alarm and we all go out and there's no fire. But do you talk to the kids in elementary school so when they start getting into junior high, they know you don't touch those and?
I can't say we actually hit on that. We go for more, uh we hit every second grader, uh every fire prevention year. But we don't go over the fire pole stations specifically for it. Um that is something that we could maybe do some outreach on. I have to say, Murray, we actually do pretty good on, we don't have a whole lot of kids pulling fire alarms. Uh if you're aware, uh your local churches around here also have pole stations. And uh sometimes there's some uh
A phone on the wall and they call and
Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe you don't want them to know they're there. Well, they're there because they, the kids in junior high and high school, they know they're there and they know what will.
I'll say our best folks that have always helped us out are the hands of the world that have worked in the school and then they, I don't know, kids have like this fear. They don't wanna be in the front office. But I I have noticed, um but uh yeah, situation, I'm kinda curious. I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna actually look at how many times we've been to an alarm, a fire alarm. Yeah, on that continuum program, all my stats, I can pull how many times we've been to a school fire alarm.
I've never been to one, cause I was in the
And it's embarrassing for everybody.
And they give that same training to Congress.
Chance. My dark horse that's in the the room is uh one of these uh fire engine standby, a wild fire engine standby and then EMS standby. Have to admit, uh we have charged for our ambulances doing the standby and of course, we've never I'm sorry, uh we need to get this in the fee structure if we wanna do it. Um every Murray High School football game, we have that ambulance sitting there. And you guys could, and any, even though these fees are in there, as you guys chose to uh give that as your donation of fee. Forgetting the name officially, but but in like May, when you guys do that, you guys could donate stuff like that. In the past, uh we haven't, but uh and they, it's about like twenty-five hundred dollars they cover for 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 staying in the EMS and stuff to be covered. I think it was twenty-five.
But do you do, do you go over to Cottonwood or just here? Both of them or?
This last season, we actually didn't do Cottonwood, they didn't invite us. So they can private shop it out as well. Um so Gold Cross covered that this last year. Prior to that, we were always up there.
They should be aware of the of the cost.
Yeah, cause those are not my on-duty crews, cause we need to keep those crews. They cannot play if that ambulance leaves. The ambulance is actually not there to transport the patient, although I tell our guys, listen, if it's an emergency, you can leave and the next ambulance will come and fill in. So the game can go on, of course. But the agreement that they have is we're not allowed to leave. You know, we just do the first aid until the ambulance gets there. But they they don't understand how the big picture works. I just, an ambulance leaves, one fills in. They don't even know what the face behind it is.
I think it's a matter of goodwill, but I think we ought, they also need to be aware, you know, there is a cost.
Yeah, and and they're, they've been great with it at Murray High. I'm not for sure if uh Gold Cross is charging less than us. Uh I do know Granite School District didn't wanna deal with two agencies, so Gold Cross does all of their high schools.
Oh, okay.
Where Murray just has one high school in Orange City. Uh they're happy to just deal with us. Alright, uh I didn't give you a whole lot of time for questions on this if I'm on time. Um but we've kinda answered some questions. What other questions you guys maybe have or the fee schedule on there?
Thank you, chief.
I don't believe that I was on time. I'm not believing it.
Thank you.
The mayor told me I had to like be all okay, I'm making that up.
Um said I've been to over the US station.
The cert classes and CPR classes and then those fees are uh in here as well.
I saw that. I was gonna ask that.
Apparently right now, the second Tuesday of every month, we do CPR cert classes. We schedule just as needed, but we just catch that one. And uh you know, I apologize, I didn't invite you guys out to this last cert class, but it was kind of a like a neighborhood that had just there, people there, but sure you guys were up to it. So I apologize for not getting that out. Where I've kinda slacked is I I I'm not always involved as I was before when you guys were getting those applications. So I'll work on that.
It's fine, cause I just happened to see it here and I was just wondering, is these the classes that you teach over the fire station?
We're gonna start some new school stuff too, community risk reduction, Fire Marshal Foles is gonna do, those will all be free. It's just all safety oriented, like we're gonna be more involved with school fire.
Did you find somebody that took Tom's place?
No, we're struggling in the cert area to have that same. So we actually, um so Tom came back to me, he said, actually, I'll stay here and do the QA, but he's not doing the cert. So he does a little bit different. It's like one hour a week. He reviews our run reports because he's such a smart guy. He does our QA and he said he'll do that uh for at least another year. And I said, hey, I'll take you. Um but uh no, it's just Kobe Atkinson, one of our full timers. Uh it's probably a little bit more of a cost than what we'd like to run it. It's cause he's not always on, yeah, some of it's when he's on shift, other times we adjust around people's schedule, but. Alright, anything else?
No, we're good.
Seeing none, we are adjourned and we will reconvene in about ten minutes.